Anyone for public comment?
None.
Yes, ma'am. All right, board members, is everybody ready?
We are.
Yes.
All right, good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. All board members are present and therefore we have a quorum. Board members, we've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. There are no participants for public comment. And so we will move on to information action items. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, board members, to all of the team members and community members who have gathered with us in noon's meeting. We really wanted to bring to you, board members, a revised calendar for the school year 2021. As a result of the governor's executive order, as well as the continued implications of the COVID-19 pandemic, our team has looked again at our 2021 calendar. And we've made some adjustments that I'll walk through, try to walk through them succinctly here. One, the start of the school year in this revised calendar for our scholars be August the 17th. So our scholars would attend school starting on August the 17th. And keeping with the governor's executive order. And they would end school on the date that was originally communicated. I believe it was May the 26th, 2021. So again, our scholars would start school August 17th this year, so in about a week, and would end school on May 26th, 2021. We are also in this calendar presenting to you, proposing to you, board members, that we reduce the total instructional days for our scholars from 180 days to 177 days. The state Board of Education earlier this week adjusted the requirements for those districts that are located in the counties included in the governor's executive order. And, and by relaxing that requirement of a 180 days instructional days for scholars, that has given us a little bit of room to maneuver, given our, our, our contracts, teacher contracts, schedules in general, and just all of those, those implications and considerations. So 177 total days for us. Teacher con main as is. With 187 days, many of those, the majority of those days, we front loaded to allow us a nice on-ramp, which actually would be every year. A nice on-ramp for teachers to prepare, to plan, to review lessons. But obviously, as we're going virtual this fall, giving us plenty of opportunity to, just to practice and make sure that we're all moving forward with a stronger grasp of the technology, the very technological moves and strategies that we'll utilize in daily instruction hours. In order to make the, in order to, to accomplish what I've already stated, the 177 instructional days, the start of school for our scholars on the 17th, we've had to remove the two or eliminate the two parent-teacher conference days. We actually feel that this is not, or shouldn't be, as great an impact because what we saw back in the spring was a much greater and more regular parent engagement and communication with, with teachers as to what the scholars were learning, their progress in that learning, and, and parents' engagement with them in, in the learning process. And so, given that experience and with some real planning with our teachers and, and school staff, that we'll still be able to provide the level of communication with our parents, guardian, that they will have the level of information and engagement with our teams, such that our scholars are fully, fully supported moving forward. We did, however, in this, in this revised calendar, we were able to retain the PD day, the professional development day, for teachers as they return from, from the win in January. It's really important, even in the best of times, in a, in a regular school year. It's really important that we have, as a school, as educators, as school staff, to come back, regroup, prepare to, to launch into the second semester. And so we were able to retain that day in January on the 4th. So teachers return on the 4th and, or staff return on the 4th of January, and students, our scholars, return on the 5th. Likewise, at the end of the school year, in, in May, as I mentioned earlier, the scholars' last day is the 26th of May. And the teachers' last day is the 20th, which is not a lot of time, but at least it allows us a little bit of time, a day, to do some of the closeout with grading and entering grades in the system and just readying for, for the, for the summer. To point, I am happy to take in that you might have with regard to the, to the calendar. Happy to, to field those questions.
Dr. Green, I do have a question. I realize that we are allowed to be under the 180 days. Is there a minimum number of days we must meet? And I particularly wondered that in case we get into the situation that we were in two or three years ago,
Yes.
where unforeseen circumstances, we're out of school with frozen pipes, cold weather, snow. So what, what room we have therein?
Yes, great question. And, and you actually, in that question, are reminding me of another piece that I meant to, to highlight here. So those districts, the eight districts that were specifically called out or indicated in the, the governor's executive order, were given the flexibility to, to reduce the instructional days down to 170. We wanted to remain as close to the 180 as possible. And so this, as I said, it gives us the, a bit of flexibility and still accomplishes some of the things that are really important in scheduling and calendaring for the, for the school year. In addition, we did, one of the things that I had a few conversations, excuse me, with team members with regard to, you know, inclement weather and, and any of those kinds of issues that we, obviously, we, we have from time to time and have had some serious experiences with in the past. You know, we are going virtual. And so moving forward, inclement weather, we expect will have a very different experience, will be a very different experience for us. As we move towards a one-to-one and ensure that all of our scholars have devices and, and homes have connectivity, this gives us an opportunity to continue the learning even when the snow is falling outside and ice is on the ground. Or when the, the heat or cooling or whatever is happening in our school buildings and, and there are issues with that. So, you know, obviously, while we're still reeling from this, this pandemic, as we continue to think what it's forcing us to do and how it's forcing us to shift, opportunity for us to be better prepared. Should we have to, you know, close schools down, you know, for any reason, even if it's related to COVID cases going forward? And certainly, if we happen to have a, an inclement weather day or something like that, we can continue with our instructional delivery, which I'm actually really excited about, to be able to have that kind of resourcing and, and to be set up for that.
Lovely, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for this update. Do you have any comments on our efforts to make sure that our children are attending virtually? And I'm not even sure what that looks like, but I mean, have we really made a point to keep up with who's really in class?
Oh, yeah, so I'm going to talk about going forward.
Okay.
You know, as we've discussed before, the spring was the spring. And it had all its challenges and, and all of that. As one, as we get more and more, most of our scholars online and, and learning, engaging virtually, that's a face-to-face, daily, you know, opportunity for teachers to check in with scholars as people and as learners and ensure that they're progressing and obviously taking, taking role attendance in that way. For any, for any reason who are not learning virtually in a synchronous, real-time, I'm teaching and you're on the other end of your commuter, computer learning then teachers, we have protocols where teachers are, and school staff, not just teachers, but school staff, our attendance monitors and counselors and all of these folks are reaching out to families looking for scholars. We're still taking role every day, that we're still required to do that. And it's just best practice, you want to know where they are. We're still doing that. So we, scholars have an opportunity, obviously, to be in person and, and to show up and do the work and be counted in that way. They also might access a video or a lesson if they had, for example, some issue with, some issue with connectivity. And, and they couldn't engage when the math lesson was being taught at 10 o'clock and you get online at 12 o'clock. Well, you can pull down the lesson. And, and lessons will be recorded and, and can be accessed in that way. And they can certainly work on the, the work packets and submit those. And we'll have a whole protocol for those to get out to scholars and to be sent back in to teachers. And, and teachers will, you know, to the extent necessary, will reach out and, and call just to, to take attendance and see if scholars have done, you know, what they've done to indicate and, and demonstrate that they were actually learning that day. We have to, we're required to provide MDE evidence that, that scholars are, are learning. And, and accounting of their being in school, so attendance and evidence of that.
Thank you. I, I knew that we had policy procedures in place, but I just wanted to, to hear it affirmed.
Sure, yes, yes, ma'am. It's, 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 you know, I, I want to be clear, it's, it's going to be a little different, right? For the large majority of folks who are engaging in the real-time virtual classrooms, then, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the screen, I'm counting the heads, the little Brady Bunch grid, right? I can take attendance in that way. But for those who may not be online and learning virtually real-time, then I've got to take, or we as a school staff have to take a couple more, I need to take a couple more steps in order to ensure that little Eric was in class, quote unquote, today.
Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I know that there, there has to be a lot of creativity involved in this process. Can you give me an example of, how do I want to say this? How, how will we know that the students are actually achieving?
It's a great question. So, you know, again, as you know, as a lifelong educator, assessment, and I'm not talking standardized tests or ACT. Daily and, and regular assessment, checking for understanding, getting evidence either through a task, hitting sample, question and answer, because some folks will be face-to-face and we'll be able to ask them questions and get responses from them in that way. Exit tickets. So we've taught the lesson and before you leave this classroom, this math classroom, this social studies classroom, tell me the three things that, you know, give me three pieces of evidence that you learned the thing that I was teaching today. Screen, quizzes and that sort of thing that are more cumulative over the course of the week, over a, a couple of weeks. We'll continue to utilize those. Again, it'll be more virtual, it will be virtual. You know, at, at least in the, in the fall. But we'll continue to utilize those various ways of understanding where scholars are. Having them to discuss and, and talk through certain concepts or to work out problems on a, on a board and submit those virtually, a picture of them or submit them on some, some board. They can upload images and that sort of thing into the system. So there, there are ways for us to, to, to have evidence that scholars are actually learning, that they're grasping the concepts and that they're, they're able to apply them as, as appropriate.
Okay. And this information, of course, will be accessible to board members?
So what we typically will, so, you know, what we typically would not bring to you would be exit tickets and that sort of thing. But the more cumulative evidences of young people. You know, we're, we're, we're still planning to give benchmarks or something along those, a benchmarking. So those kinds of data, absolutely will.
Okay.
That absolutely will not change. We will be bringing you evidence of that. And, and I'm sure there are other ways that all the smart educators on the line will be thinking about how we can demonstrate, how we can know and demonstrate to others that scholars are progressing so that we can share that. Some of it, you know, a, again, as an educator, you know, sometimes it's, it's more qualitative than quantitative.
Right.
Or qualitative before it's clearly quantitative. And so over time, we'll, we'll likely be able to give you both of those until we get to a point where we've got a really solid benchmark assessment and data from that or some other unit test and of course, assessment, those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Yes. And what I know is you all will hold us accountable for giving you that, that information for, for reporting to you as regularly as possible, the evidence that our babies in our, actually grownups. We're darn near grownups, some of our, that all of our scholars are, are progressing.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
What about our standardized testing?
As it stands, actually, we just got some, some feedback from the Mississippi Department of Education that they're going to be working with us around, oh, let me back up. We still have to take standardized tests. The question on the, on the floor and that many of us have been kind of reeling and trying to work through is we're, we're implementing a virtual model, at least in the fall. And so for all of those standardized required assessments, screeners, readiness assessments, et cetera, that we would give in the fall, you know, we've, we've been looking at ways that we, looking for ways that would not require young people to take them in person in schools. Because again, that's not the model that we are implementing. And so we've just gotten some feedback, just like hot off the presses in the last day or so, from MDE, Mississippi Department of Education, that they are, that they are making some allowances for taking assessments online. But we do still have to take standardized state assessment.
Thank you.
The question will be, you know, how, how do we do that online? Or, or do we have to do something in person and, and work through some distancing and maybe outside or, or whenever, all kinds of IDB working through?
Thank you.
Yes, I, I don't mean to go long on this, but I, I, I feel it's necessary to say. I, for one, for all the angst that those standardized tests bring in the spring, I, for one, was really looking forward to our scholars taking the assessment last spring. So I was very bummed, you know, not the, obviously because of COVID in and of itself, but also pretty bummed that our scholars were not able to take that assessment because we were tracking towards some really nice gains. And so, you know, we're looking forward to another op, to, to demonstrate just how smart we are and, and and what we're learning. And so, you know, we, we obviously want to do it in, in the safest way and, and ways that makes the most sense and is most reasonable. But, you know, we're, we're definitely in a place as a district and as a, a learning community where we're looking for opportunities to show just how smart we are. Any other questions, board members? Calendar, structure, any of that?
I have a couple of questions and comments. First off, I just want to give props to the team. We, on, well, a lot of things. It was great to hear Dr. Hairston's question and to know that some of those answers were given on the parent engagement seminars this week. Had hundreds of people. So again, props to the team for standing those up. I know we had several questions as parents that were answered. The other, another thing too, it's great to hear about the potential option that MDE is sharing around assessments. I think it speaks to frankly, the collaborative environment, it's solution-oriented environment. You know, it takes a lot of moving parts. Everyone's got to be flexible and I feel like our team has been incredibly flexible. And also just, you know, helpful when the state board takes action to allow us to exist in this, you know, to, to make, you know, be as minimally disruptive as possible. And frankly, to do it all within the context of, of an executive order that's designed, you know, but also limited in scope to reduce the effects of the pandemic. And so one question I do want to ask you, Dr. Green, to speak to is the reduction in days. Anytime we reduce instructional days, that's not a decision as a board that we should take lightly. What are we losing and how will we mitigate that loss?
That's a, that's a great question. And, and we, I will say, we struggled a bit with coming to this decision of reducing the days by three. And, and this is, I think, where we're heartened and, and believe we have some opportunities. So we, because we are, because of the work that we've been doing with our, our teachers and educators in general around the use of technology, the work that we've been doing over the past year with implementation of the new curricular models and curriculums, the tightening that we've done around assessments and just all of the strat that we use day in and day out to provide really high-quality education. We, we do look a better place now instructionally, even with, I see that my internet may be a little spotty. Can you hear me? Okay. Even, even with the going virtual now, we, we do believe that we're in a better place now instructionally as an organization because of the things that, the tools that we're using, the strategies that, the tools, the, the assessments, the curriculum materials, et cetera, even the online tools that we utilize, the strategies that we're using as teachers and, 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 and other educators engaging scholars. We do believe that the, the increase in effectiveness of our instruction will in the very least level out the loss of instructional time. You, as you, as I think everyone here knows, you can, you can, and there are schools and districts over the, you know, across the country that sometimes will expand the number of, of hours in the school day. But if you haven't increased the effectiveness of that time and of the instructional delivery, those, that additional time, it rarely does it give you anything. And so the fact that we've really worked to improve our instructional delivery and the tools and, and the expectations of our scholars, we're confident that we, in the very least, that it'll mitigate the loss of, of the seat hour, seat times. We're also thinking through projects that young people can do kind of offline, whether it's a more book reports that could be done using the technology and recording their, their report or, or whatever it is that they're delivering around book reports. More opportunities to do some digital journals, those sorts of things. Sustained silent reading that scholars can do on the front end or tail end of their, of their school days. All of those sorts of things are really powerful learning experiences for young people and things that, you know, you don't have to be sitting in front of the teacher in order for you to do that. And so again, those plus probably on and on, other ideas that, that our educators will provide to families will help to round out some of the experiences that they have with us virtually and when they're not with us and they're working at home.
That's great. That's really helpful. I mean, my last question would just be around, so the major change for parents, guardians is that school starts August 17th, I, I believe, in terms of the right here, right now. How will we word out and make sure that everyone knows school starts August 17th?
And, and not Monday? So.
Or Wednesday.
Or Wednesday. Several ways, obviously on our website, updating on the website, using our social media. Believe it or not, we actually get a lot of, of attention on our, on our social media. So utilizing that, also the schools and, and we using the, I call phone blast, the, the, the system that we use to communicate out to, to families through robocalls, using those to, to go out to, to all families. Individual schools will oftentimes have email lists, distribution lists and that sort of thing. Schools will often have some parent groups and, and that sort of thing that they utilize to get the word out as well. So we'll go widely, broadly. We'll also put a statement out to the media to help us to get the word out. So several ways that we've contemplated helping folks to know exactly when, when school starts and, and some of the other information as to the virtual program.
Thank you.
So in sum, you know, what we're bringing to you today, board members, is a revised calendar. Schools starting for our scholars on August the 17th, ending, August 17th, 2020. Ending, the school ending May 26th for scholars, May 26th of 2021. Reducing the number of instructional days in front of teachers from 180 to 177. And still maintaining many of the breaks and, and some of the, the, I'll say, features that we often see year to year in our, in our, in our calendars. No change to the teacher contract. And teacher days remaining the same, start and, and days remaining the same.
All right, board members, are there any other final questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Green, for all of the clarity. Is there a motion to approve action item A?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Is there a consideration to hold an executive session? There's no consideration to hold the executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I move? We adjourn?
Dr. Harrison has moved. Ms. Fickers has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.